Okay, here we go.
Seven all times.
Yep. This is the common council meeting to be held Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. The meeting is called to order. Would you?
Alderperson Juzwiki?
Present.
Alderperson Bailey?
Present.
Alderperson Castner?
Present.
Alderperson Sarian?
Present.
Alderperson Akers?
Present.
Item two, we have Pastor Steve Rogers.
Oh, it is so good to see all of you. Kind of feels like family whenever I come in here. I'm so honored to stand before you, and I'm just going to take a moment and ask the Lord's blessing over your proceedings here tonight. Thank you, dear heavenly Father, for all of your kindness and your goodness and blessing us with this incredible city to live in. Thank you for the leadership that you have blessed our city with, and I pray, Lord, that you would pour out your favor and your wisdom on every decision and every area of all of their lives, that we would know much Thanksgiving as we enter into this thankful, this season of thankfulness. Lord, we are so thankful for all that you have done for us, and I pray that you'll continue that in the great name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Item C is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right. And under D, I'd entertain a motion to approve the November 9th minutes.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
By Alderperson Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Don't really have a mayor's report this evening, but I'm sure an Alderperson does, or there's an announcement coming from someone. I guess under mayor's report, I would say that we celebrated Thanksgiving Sunday on my birthday.
Happy birthday.
It was very, very nice. Everybody was there as opposed to last year when we had Thanksgiving, and everybody was all over the country, and we couldn't get together, and we all wrote emails to each other saying, "Boy, I wish we could be there." So, I kind of like this thing, celebrating it early, to be honest with you.
Well, happy birthday, but I was not invited.
Thank you. I am social security eligible.
All right. You still need that health insurance thing.
I can't tell you how great it feels to, to reach the point in your life where you're social security eligible and AARP sends you stuff in the mail like two or three times a week.
No, they start doing that when you're.
It's just so invigorating. Kind of gives me a burst of energy, to be honest.
ARP starts at 30, I think.
They kind of started about 50, and then I ran into, so this is the mayor's report. If you run into somebody who works for AARP, you can get off their mailing list for like five years or something, and then they put you back on. They'll cycle through. They'll quit hassling if you ask.
All right.
Nobody cares. That's my mayor's report this evening.
No, I do care, because that's a pain in the butt. I know the feeling.
Huh?
I'm not old enough, and I still get the damn stuff.
Do you?
Yeah, I do.
Enough for AARP.
I've seen you use the card over there.
Oh, I guess you're right.
I've seen you use the card. I saw you at Denny's going, you know, "Do I get the temp?" I saw that.
I, yes, so, yeah.
He did. I never saw. I just made that up.
I haven't been to Denny's in 30 years, but.
Really? We go there. It's not, it's not bad. It's in your district. We try to support your district.
I should, yeah.
You should. Zeb's is closed, of course, because of the flooding on 27th and Loomis, which is the best place to go for breakfast. Sadly, they haven't reopened since the flooding.
All right. But the Forum across the street's pretty damn good for breakfast, too.
Forum's pretty good, too, but ours are different, so.
All right. At least we're sticking in the city as, as opposed to going.
I suppose we probably shouldn't be talking about this during mayor's report.
No.
Okay. Is there any aldermatic reports?
Mr. Mayor, just, we had a pre-commission meeting. The Arbor Day planting is underway for 2026, and the spring tree planting is being considered. Over 100 trees be planted to replace some of the trees we lost over the winter.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got two trees on Leighton Avenue by my house, I saw.
Yep, starting.
What kind of trees were they, Pam, as long as we're under.
They're live trees. They're live. They're live.
Now, there's lots of important stuff here today. Citizen commentary, we have someone here from the county to explain the wonders of FEMA and business grant.
Hello, everybody. Good, good evening. Thank you for having me. So, my name is Kieran Germy. I am a public affairs specialist with the U.S. Small Business Administration. We are a federal agency, and we're here following the recent disaster that happened in August. I'm sure you've heard of us. I'm sure you've heard that FEMA have been here, too, for.
I'm surprised you're here. I.
Thank you.
In the news, it was like, you know.
Thank you for having me. It's an honor to be here.
Not that you're here, but that someone actually works there.
Yes, certainly. Yeah, we've been here since mid-September, and we, while FEMA's deadline was the 12th of this month of November, we have a grace period of 60 days, so we'll be here at least for, I would say, at least like for 60 days after the 12th. And it's an honor for us to support survivors of the disaster from homeowners, renters, small businesses, and nonprofits. A lot of people would be surprised when they hear that Small Business Administration, 80% of our support goes to homeowners, actually. So, especially in the primary counties, the primary counties such as Waukesha County, Milwaukee, and Washington are the counties where we are able to help homeowners. Other than that, it will be mostly businesses. So, as of today, I actually have some good news. We have exceeded $30 million in funding from the SBA to the survivors of the flooding and storms that occurred on between the 9th and the 12th of this year, of August of this year. And basically what we do, I'm not sure if most, most of you are familiar with SBA, but we are U.S. Small Business Administration. Again, we're a federal agency, and we're part of the disaster recovery program. And what we do is, once a disaster occurs, we dispatch our team, and we try to provide support from customer service representatives, public affairs specialists, and inform people of their ability to seek help from the federal government. So, what we do compared to FEMA, FEMA, they provide grants. We provide.
Not always. Not to cities, they don't, apparently.
Yes, technically, that's what they do. They provide grants for survivors, but we provide loans. So, we're not-for-profit or anything like that, very low-interest loans, 3% loans. And with, and for example, the types of loans we provide are, we have, for business, for businesses, we have two types, physical and economic injury disaster loans. For physical, we provide up to $2 million, and same for, which covers mostly the damage that occurs physically to the business. And economic injury disaster loans, which occurs to like account payables or fixed debts, payroll, and all of that. So, it covers the financial side of the business. With that, with economic injury, we have the deadline of June 11th, 2026. So, businesses, a lot of them are not, like, are not actually aware that their, their businesses have been impacted until like six months, a year down the line. That's why their, their deadline is extended most of the time, since they see like lower traffic, and if they can prove that, we are able to help them with our loans. So, also homeowners can get up to $500,000. Compared to FEMA, for example, like they can provide up to $40,000 for the maximum. So, that's, that's, that's why we come here. We come to help people send, complete on their fee, while FEMA are mostly like, you know, on emergency basis. So, also renters can also take advantage of our program with up to $100,000, which covers personal property, from their vehicle to anything that, that covers personal property. So, what we take into consideration, what we tell survivors to do is, we tell them, "Don't worry about the credit score." While we take, well, while we do take into account the credit history and ability to repay, in addition to the complete application, we, they can find application at lending.sba.gov. And one of the biggest advantages that people get by going with us and not with other lenders, again, we're a federal agency. We're not here for profit, that's first, low interest rates, and also loan terms. We have up to 30 years with no necessity to pay, to make any payment on the first year, and no interest occurred in the first year. So, yeah, that's, that's mostly it, and that's.
Do you have materials that we can distribute?
Absolutely, yes, we do. I do. And I can absolutely, and follow up with digital material in case you want to put it in the, in the website, certainly. I can definitely do that, for sure. Thank you so much. Thank you for having me. It's been an honor. Have a great receiving night.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay. Did you get the, can you get the stuff, if he has anything that he's giving away? Okay. All right, let's move on. Is there anybody else? I don't think so. Item I is public hearings. This is, the first one is I, one, little A and little B. Public hearing for a special use permit for comfort of a proposed personal wellness service and massage parlor located at 5177 South 76th Street in Suite 504. This is a resolution for the special use permit, as well as the site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is a tenant going into the My Salon Suites. They're going to be located in a tenant space that is partially used by another business and part-time by him as well. They offer Swedish sports, deep tissue, and prenatal massages. Their hours of operation are 9:00 to 5:00 PM, Sunday through Tuesday. The site was most recently reviewed in December 2024. No issue, no new issues have come up since then. Parking requirements, 104 are required, 47 are provided. Council may continue to waive that shortage. Plan Commission recommended approval on October 14th. No letters of support or objection have been received to date.
Great. Is there anyone that would like to speak for, against, or for informational purposes concerning this item? Is there anyone that would like to speak for, against, or informational purposes concerning this item? I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Alderperson Akers, second by Alderperson Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Does the council wish to create, approve a resolution for the special use permit and approve the site review for this business?
I'll make a motion to approve items one, A, and P as presented.
Motion Alderperson Castner, is there a second? Second by Alderperson Bailey, would you please call?
Alderperson Juzwiki?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Item I, two, is a public hearing on a special use permit for Helping Hands Committee Adult Day Program, a proposed service for the elderly and persons with disabilities located at 11019 West Leighton Avenue, submitted by Christopher Schwetz, Doing Businesses, Helping Hands Community. This is also to approve the resolution for the special use permit and approve the site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Helping Hands is going to occupy 2,500 square feet of tenant space in the multi-tenant building. They have three full-time and two part-time employees. They serve 15 to 20 clients per day, but their license would allow them to have up to 40, but as of right now, it's only 15 to 20. Their hours of operation are 8:00 to 3:00, Monday through Friday. During the site review, there was an issue with the light fixture, dumpster enclosures, and shipping containers. I do just want to take a moment right now and compliment the property owner, Joe Klein. He has been incredibly great to work with in getting all of these items resolved, and has been very proactive, keeping staff informed every step of the way with getting the site brought into compliance with code. Parking requirements, 79 are required, 47 are provided. Council may waive the shortage. Plan Commission recommended approval on October 14th. No letters of support or objection have been received to date.
Is Mr. Klein here? No. I wanted to applaud him, just for. It's a good thing.
No, it's a damn good thing.
It's a very good thing. Is that, would anybody like to speak for, against, or informational purposes concerning this item? Would anyone like to speak for, against, or informational purposes concerning this item? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close it.
Motion Alderperson Akers to close. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Juzwiki, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Although I will have to add, in regards to the working together with the city, the city has been very cooperative with him as well.
I think so. Yeah, there's an order to things sometimes. That's.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve the resolution for the special use permit, approve the site plan review?
That is my motion to.
Alderperson Castner, is there a second? Second, thank Alderperson Juzwiki, would you call?
Alderperson Juzwiki?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Item number three is a public hearing on the ordinance to adopt a land use map amendment to the 2020 City of Greenfield Comprehensive Plan for a portion of the property located on South 92nd Street, from mixed residential to neighborhood business office, submitted by Scott Yelch, Doing Businesses Cobalt Park Partners, and Devon Bailey, Doing Businesses, should put land surveys. This would include approving an ordinance to adopt a land use amendment and separately approving an ordinance to amend an official greenfield zoning map change.
So, what we're looking at here, as part of signature development overall, there is the creation of a new lot. This lot is going to be a commercial lot. In order for it to become a commercial lot, we have to zone it commercially. Currently, it's zoned PUD 3, which is exclusively for residential use. No commercial uses would be allowed in the PUD 3 zoning district. Before, we can create a commercial lot there, we have to make sure that the long-range map comports with that. So, that's why there's that two-step that the mayor laid out. So, the first thing that we would need to do is amend that long-range map. That would bring it from mixed residential to neighborhood business slash office. Once, or if you decide to do that, then we can also, then we can take the next step of changing the zoning from PUD 3, which allows for multi-family residential, to C2 for commercial use. Plan Commission recommended approval on October 14th. No letters of support or objection have been received to date.
So, as part of the TIF that is hoped to be created in the area, just so the record's clear, it requires mixed uses. This is likely going to be a, a small commercial component to the overall plan that has previously been approved. This makes the TIF process go smoothly. I don't know if you remember earlier in the year, there was a proposal for the TIF that went in a different direction with 35% residential, and it, it included a bunch of the residential neighborhoods around it, which was never the intent. It was, so, that's essentially what this is about.
Do we know what kind of business? I mean.
So, it's a small property. It's not going to be a Walmart, that's for sure. It's, I mean, so, some of the things that they've talked about is things that cater to residential users, probably like potentially a coffee shop or that kind of use.
Neighborhood coffee shop.
Neighborhood coffee shop.
I, I received several calls on this. People were a little upset. They didn't want a service station or McDonald's, and.
So.
How can we, several people, how can we, we prevent that from being a McDonald's or?
So, the, the size of the property itself would not support a drive-through like McDonald's or, or even probably a sit-down restaurant. It would, it would be very small in nature.
Or a service station. People were concerned. I got several calls on this.
A service station would not fit on this parcel. A service station would be a special use and likely not zoned properly for this parcel. This isn't going to be a service station, a QuickTrip, a McDonald's, a Culver's.
So, what kind of assurances can we give my constituents that call that are very upset that they don't want something like that?
So, we can say that the, we can say three things. One is the zoning would not permit most of those things. Two, the land use plan would not permit most of those things. And finally, the most important thing, the size of the lot that's being zoned would not support any of those things.
They, it also is mandated that a bike trail goes through the middle of that, too, almost.
Yeah. So, the other part of this is, is part of the overall development, the bike trail, the, the path.
Path.
Powerline Trail Phase 4, which will be going from 92nd to 99th Street, right? That's going through here, right? So, that, that, did you, are you showing it?
Yeah, the arrow's going through there, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that also will be going through the property, which further diminishes, diminishes the size of the land that's available to do things on the property, which will almost, without exception, limit the number of commercial uses to just a handful. It's a very, very small piece of property. So, and if they have, if there, if anyone has questions about any of this, they can contact me, or Gina, or Jeff, or, or anybody.
But they're just concerned about the future and how something could be proposed or that they would not like.
It would be.
It wouldn't fit into the neighborhood, kind of thing.
It would be physically impossible for almost a significant amount of commercial uses, including the kinds of things that you've talked about, or the things that might be distracting to a neighborhood, to actually fit on the site.
And it would have to go to the Plan Commission and through the whole process.
It would have, it would have to create a site and landscaping plan that fit on a very small parcel. And while we see these things where the number of parking stalls, you know, is, that they need is 60, and this requires 40, I'm not sure how many parking stalls you can actually fit on this site after the path is in and a small building like a coffee shop is created.
And there will be no parking on 92nd Street.
And there will be no parking on 92nd Street. So, I can't imagine that there are very many things that could actually fit there, other than a few very limited uses. And in order for, say, a Walmart to go on that site, or something, or a gas station, or a QuickTrip, or something that nobody wants, or McDonald's, it would have to go through a formal public hearing and zoning process. So, they can't just say, "Well, we got that little spot. Can we make it the whole site?" That would be a full-blown public hearing with notice provided to everybody about an anticipated use there.
By 10 feet, you'd have that notice to everyone, the site, the property.
Well, so, it would be all of those neighborhoods within 300 feet around the thing that looks, I don't know, is that gold or brown? Is that a gold? It's not Burnt Sina. Remember Burnt Sina? They don't make that anymore. But.
Oh, Burnt Sina.
So, it would include all of the neighborhood that are around that large parcel.
I would think, since they're going to put it on the powerline trail, that they want to attract the people on the trail.
They probably want to create an amenity for the trail.
That's what I would assume, if it's that small.
It's, it's a very small piece of property. And the reality is, maybe nothing gets built there because it's, it's not feasible to build something there. But in order, yep, that's it.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Sure. Is anyone here to speak for, against, or informational purposes concerning the item? Is anyone here to speak for, against, or informational purposes concerning this item? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Alderperson Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Castner, would, so, can you call in 3A? This is to adopt the land use map amendment?
Should we vote to close?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we?
No, we didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, sorry. Item 3A, I'd entertain a mo, I can't entertain a motion because someone says I can't entertain motions. I would, will, does someone wish to make a motion to approve the ordinance?
3A and B as presented.
You have to do it one at a time. So.
Oh.
The first one is the land use amendment. Would, so, yours is to approve the land use amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Juzwiki, can you call on that?
Alderperson Juzwiki?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Okay. Item 3B is to approve the ordinance to amend the official greenfield zoning map.
I'll make that motion.
Alderperson Castner, second by Alderperson Akers, would you call?
Alderperson Juzwiki?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Okay, moving along to item four, a public hearing on a special use permit for a proposed health supplement store and a general merchandise store at the, at Wellness Stores, the existing vape and tobacco business at 4969 South 27th Street. This is to approve a resolution for the special use for the proposed health supplement store and general merchandise store, as well as site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the applicant for Wellness Stores is actually the same individual who operates Vape City. As many of you are probably aware, earlier this fall, a new law went into place, and that really diminished the amount of products that could be sold at vape stores in Wisconsin. As such, one of the approaches that this individual has decided to take is to diversify the items that he is selling. So, in addition to selling tobacco and vape items that he has a special use permit for, what is being, the special use permit before you today is the retail of general merchandise items that he is adding to the store. So, vitamins, supplements, alternative wellness products, things of that nature. And that is why it needs a special use permit for that, because that's not covered under the special use he already had. Hours of operation, 8 to 10 daily, that's his current hours. Site review, exterior lights have already been corrected. There was window signage. It was a screen. It's been removed. Parking requirements, 20 are required, 70 are provided. Council may waive the shortage. Plan Commission recommended approval on October 14th. We have received one letter of objection to date.
Okay. Are vitamins, supplements, and alternative wellness products a permitted use?
Within the overall scope of items he presented us, we categorized it more under general merchandise, because he is also selling shaker bottles and just quite the general merchandise.
Does general merchandise a permitted use?
General merchandise is a special use.
Okay. I wasn't sure. Okay. I did, is anyone here to speak for, against, or informational purposes concerning this item? I did receive, or we did receive one objection. We are responding from 4933 South 28th with our concerns regarding the proposal for 4969 South 27th Street. The current vape facility has led to multiple pieces of debris, garbage being tossed along the road, and homes. We would like to know what exactly we will sell at the store. Does general merchandise mean the same smoke, tobacco items currently being sold, while homes were shut down, and it was shut down recently for a short period of time, to see how that would work? The road was much cleaner from liquor bottles and smoke items, and it had very minimal traffic. We are concerned what will happen in this area, again, with this new store going in. We would like more clarification on the type of wellness, general items this store will sell, and if homes will be permanently closed. As of today, with limited information presented us, we are opposed to the change. Robert Rick and Kayla Wolf. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for, against, or informational purposes concerning this item? I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Alderperson Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Sarian, would you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the special use permit.
Entertain a motion.
Hmm? Enter, I know. I just have said it for 20 years or something.
So, do we discuss now, or after the? We make a motion, then discuss.
I'll make a motion to approve items 4A and 4B as presented.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Bailey, under discussion.
So, I'd like to know, do we have any more information about what items will be sold?
What the applicant explained to us is that they're selling what, more like viral products, so items that are.
I'm sorry, what kind of products?
Viral products, so.
Viral?
Like online viral, like popular online, trendy, yes.
Kind of like maybe powders and.
Yeah.
What kind of powders?
Basically, yeah, basically anything in the health sphere of things. So, whether that be the supplements, it's the bottles that you put your protein powders in. He, it's really quite the variety of like health and wellness products is kind of where it all comes into. But it's everything from the, like, the things that you would ingest to the things that you would use to get healthier, whether that be sweatbands or whatever, like those type of items.
So, disposable items like vapes, which are not available anymore for these folks to sell, and many of the vape shops are actually disappearing?
I thought that was going to be in effect in a year. I read somewhere that.
No, you can't get them. If you want to, want to get a vape now, you have to kind of do it by mail order and get it from California or Michigan.
Okay.
Or Minnesota, I think.
Oh.
Not that I would know this personally.
And, and was there any talk about what my constituents had said about the garbage around there and on homes?
We can just keep the road closed, and we won't have that problem.
Yeah, well.
So, what would typically happen is people coming out of the vape shop and out of the liquor store, right? You know, the people that would have their little bottle of whatever, they'd go, instead of driving on 27th Street and maybe taking a shot, which is illegal and is highly discouraged, they would just drive up homes and flick the things all over the place. Same thing with old vape canisters when those were around, or cigarette packages, or blunts, you know, those, not, not marijuana blunt, but the cigars, the cigar things, right?
Okay.
Yeah, which are sometimes called those, I think. But, I don't know, I'm a boomer, I'm told, so I don't know what people call these things.
So, can we say anything about that when we're, if we're passing this motion?
So, I think he's described what he's going to sell as.
No, I mean the, the garbage.
So, just with regard to the, some of the other questions that were raised by this, this resident, there will be a survey going to everyone in that neighborhood. I think it's going out by the end of this week, tomorrow, with questions about how it went with the road closed and what, you know, how inconvenient it were. What we're trying to do, too, is we're trying to figure out, you know, is it the people on homes, you know, what do they think? The people north of homes that have dead-end streets versus the people south of homes? streets versus the people south of homes, which potentially could have had more people go through their neighborhoods? So we're, we're waiting to find out what, what the neighborhood actually have, like consistent with what I think the common council asked for, hopefully. And then, once those, those surveys are compiled, and hopefully people answer them honestly, and all that kind of stuff, then the council can make a decision whether or not homes should be permanently closed next spring with the construction project.
Right. But if we pass this item tonight, can we make it contingent upon?
Homes being closed?
No, contingent upon the owner trying to make sure that.
Not having customers that throw stuff out of their car windows on the road? Probably not.
You don't even know if the people throwing the stuff out are their customers anyhow. Twenty-seventh Street is a lead-in to that whole neighborhood.
So typical.
They're cut through, so hence why we want to close it. So it could be anyone driving down Twenty-seventh Street. So we really should close that road.
That really is one of the only remaining neighborhood roads that's from Twenty-seventh Street, that's not a quarter-section road. So when people want to do things on Twenty-seventh Street, and they want to kind of go somewhere where it's not like a big, busy, or quarter-section street, that's a perfect place to go.
There's other ones.
Not really.
Yeah, there is.
There's, there's one up by Cole, the old Cole's Food Store, by the.
There's also one.
By Diamond Gems, there's one.
The south of Coal Spring. I can't think of what that street is.
Which has the same kind of issues, going, people cutting through Botford, all the way to the end. That's Botford, I think, isn't it?
And it only goes to Thirty-Fifth.
Well, that's all you have to do to cut off Coal Spring, just, so those street, there's only a few of them, right?
I guess what I'll do is I'll just ask the owner to tell his, ask his patrons to be, patrons to be more careful about where they're throwing things.
The good news is that a lot of people that were dumping vapes and stuff, they don't sell vapes anymore, so they can't really dump them in the neighborhood.
And I don't know what this new powder is gonna be.
Maybe they should provide some garbage cans in this park, in this building.
He does, he actually does, he is.
This is a weird question. Have you ever taken any powder drinks or mixed anything like that? Like Liquid IV or any of those?
Like lemonade?
Carnation.
Lemonade would be a kind of an example, but more.
Carnation instant breakfast drink.
I'm thinking that's a no.
Collagen.
Yeah.
Kind of that kind of stuff, right?
What, collagen chicken broth?
No, collagen, like the powder that you put in milk or water to supplement your hair growth, to make your fingernails stronger, to help your skin.
When I had to take a test for the hospital, you know, from a procedure that I had to do, I mixed some stuff into it, yeah.
So that's the kind of stuff I think he's selling that doesn't require prescription.
Thinking stuff that would make you eat less too, kind of powder?
One fast, they have those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
No, we will talk, I mean, I'll talk to him and say, "Hey, can you," he, he has been compliant, I think, right, with signage. He has been trying, his businesses suffered because he can't sell what he went into business to sell. So I think he's just trying to, he has a lease, so I think he's trying to just sell something that he thinks is gonna work, so, okay.
Wait, I have one quick question, Mike. We're not creating any sort of loophole with the current ordinance for tobacco and vape shops by changing this special use permit. We're inherently renewing as an addendum, or this is completely replacing?
Hypothetically, this brings him closer to compliance, because it gives him the opportunity to sell things that are compliant with our code.
Yep. So we're just gonna add it as an addendum, then? And we're not taking away the original special use permit for vape and tobacco?
No.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Motion was made and seconded. Any more discussion? Would you please call?
Alderperson Drews Wiki?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Item five is a public hearing on a special use permit for Yummy Bowl, proposed full-service restaurant located forty-six thirty-eight South Seventy-sixth Street, submitted by Yi, Ji, Ying Wang? Sorry, I try and, this is to approve the special use permit, as well as approve the site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the former TGI Fridays, former Crab de Jour, is getting a new tenant, and it will be Yummy Bowl. They'll occupy the entire six thousand two hundred and eighty square foot building. They'll have five full-time and, or six full-time and five part-time employees. They're a build-your-own Mongolian stir-fry-and-made-to-order sushi kind of place. The hours of operation on Sundays, eleven to nine, ten-thirty to nine-thirty on, from Mondays through Thursdays, and ten-thirty AM to ten PM Friday and Saturday. Site review, considering that the site's been sitting for a little bit now, it's in pretty good shape. The only item that I noticed during the site review was that exterior lights in this area, the top portions have been broken or were missing. That's already been dealt with by the applicant. Planning Commission also noted that the TGI Fridays signage was still shadowed onto the building. The applicant has indicated that their goal is to have their own signage that covers it, so it will not be visible anymore. Parking requirements, eighty are required, one hundred and thirty are provided, therefore council does not need to waive a shortage. Planning Commission recommended approval on October fourteenth. No letters of support or objection have been received to date.
Is anyone here to, to speak in favor, against, or informational purposes concerning this item, other than the applicant? Is anyone here to speak in favor, against, or for informational purposes concerning this item? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Alderperson Akers, are second?
Second.
Second, Alderperson Drews Wiki, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'd entertain.
No, you won't. I would like to make a motion.
So what do I say if I don't say?
I would like to make a motion, by me.
Would, could you, does anybody want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion. Do I hear a motion?
To approve the resolution for the special use and approve the site review.
Perfect. Alderperson Akers just made that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderperson Castner, discussion?
Sounds like it's gonna be good.
It's gonna be yummy.
I know. I did, I, where'd it go? When you opened it?
Motion was made and seconded.
It's a national chain, correct?
Yeah.
There was something similar over at Bay, Bay Shore, was it? Something like that, but it was a different one. But yeah, okay.
Is this the first one in the state?
How about if we vote?
Yeah, I think so. This was kind of pointless at planning.
Alderperson Drews Wiki?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Okay, the reason we had so many public hearings tonight is because we only had one the last meeting for the budget, so we didn't have a laundromat during our budget like we did one year. Never know, right? Uh, okay, I don't have anything other J. Under K, new business, item K one is adopt a resolution approving settlement of the claim of Morgan Zapalousky. Entertained a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderperson Akers, is there a second? Alderperson Castner, was that?
No.
Bailey? Okay, would you please call?
Alderperson Drews Wiki?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Item K two is approve an application for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six second-hand pawnbroker article dealer license received from TJC Group LLC, Christopher P. Wall Agent, for the property located at seventy-four seventy-seven West Leighton Avenue, the Jewelry Center. Entertained a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderperson Akers, are a second?
Second. Did they sell?
Yeah, I was gonna say, didn't always.
I don't know.
Believe it's a change in ownership.
Change in ownership.
It is a change. Dean sold, huh?
Okay, motion was made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three is approve applications for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six operator licenses by our city clerk, subject to all the disclaimers with regard to being in good standing and paying and all that stuff.
I'll make that motion with those conditions.
Motion by Alderperson Akers, are a second?
Second.
Second, Alderperson Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'd like to take items four through eleven together. These are all applications for temporary Class B retailer licenses received from the Harleys Owners Group for indoor events on December sixth, December twelfth, December thirteenth, December twentieth, January seventeenth, January thirty-first, February fourteenth, and February twenty-eighth. Entertained a motion to approve those.
I move for approval.
Alderperson Sarian, is there a second? Second, Alderperson Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twelve is adopt an ordinance creating section eight point three-three of the Greenfield Municipal Code regarding the impoundment of vehicles used in reckless driving. Entertained a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderperson Drews Wiki, second, Alderperson Bailey. This is the stuff that you've heard on the news recently with the legislative change, where reckless drivers can have their vehicles impounded. This is the ordinance to do that, consist, city, consistent with the city of Milwaukee's.
Do a lot of them own the cars, or not?
So the ordinance is, if you read the ordinance, it tells you exactly what you can and can't do. The police department was happy with how it was worded. This one is actually enforceable, and it can be used. The previous version was very difficult to interpret and was subject to all sorts of subjective things that weren't good. So this is a good one, I'm told. Motion was. Did we do anything? Motion was made and seconded. Would you please call?
Alderperson Drews Wiki?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Item thirteen is a request to approve the signing and acceptance of the state and local cybersecurity grant program awarded to the city of Greenfield. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
No, you won't. I would make a motion to approve.
By Alderperson Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderperson Drews Wiki. Our IT director, Mr. Lemmers, was here this evening. I said he could leave, because I didn't think we would object.
To a grant?
Yeah, but he was here to answer questions, and he meant that there were some. So I'm hoping there are no questions. Motion was made and seconded. Would you please call?
Alderperson Drews Wiki?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
I would like to make a motion to approve items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, which were the items from the planning commission. Alderperson Castner is the representative. This does not include item seventeen.
Make a motion to approve those items.
Somebody wants one separately.
Second.
You made the motion? Castner did, second by Drews Wiki.
Just a quick question. Forty-seven fifty-one is the old, what, Melnati's? Which one?
Yes.
Forty-seven fifty-one, the Denali Pizza?
Yes.
It is.
And on item sixteen, we're eliminating.
It was Luminati's Pizza. Yeah, that's where they were. Yes? Okay, motion was made. This is to approve the Autoplex Repair Shop at fifty-four fifty-four West Forest Home, special use for Denali Pizza, which is in the old Mal, Luminati's place. The special use review and site review for Tacuira Los Tricarnes, the certified survey map on thirty-three eighty South Hundredneystreet and thirty-two sixty South Hundredneystreet, the site landscaping and architectural plans for the Whitnell High School, and the site landscaping and architectural plans for the multi-tenant building at forty-six sixty-three South Fifty-first Street, which is the corner lot on Fifty-first and Leighton. Did you, so if we need to take any of them separately, we can.
Is that one gonna fit in the neighborhood?
It's gonna fit in the neighborhood now.
The uses?
Well, every use is subject to the zoning code, and it will have how many spots?
Can you tell us what you're talking about, please?
Talking about the, why don't, let's take item twenty separately. Do the maker of the motion and the secondary concur? Okay, so this is to approve fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, and nineteen. Motion was made and seconded. Can you just call that?
Alderperson Drews Wiki?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Okay, so going to item twenty, this is approve site landscaping and architectural plans for the proposed multi-tenant retail building to be located forty-six sixty-three South Fifty-first Street. And we're kind of trying to pull up the plan. So this is what came up. This is the area that is the building up to five spaces. It could be two, could be three, could potentially be one, or it could be five little ones. Do you have the?
Landscape?
Land, the site there, that's what the site plan will look like. It's substantially smaller. The only thing that we still don't know about is the dumpster enclosure, right? So the dumpster enclosure, we're trying to get it closer to the northwest corner. It doesn't make much sense, kind of there. I know the architect is here, but do we have the dumpster enclosure, Mr. Architect? By chance, do we have the dumpster, did we have the dumpster enclosure figured out?
Yes, we actually, I did talk to Nanny, I'm not sure if he sent any of your guys' plans yet, but he's working on it, so.
So any approval would be contingent on staff's acceptance of, of the amended or proposed dumpster location. Essentially, it's, we're hoping that it can be shifted to the west.
This isn't all that bad, but we think we can do better.
Right. It just, in some ways, it helps them, as opposed to.
Can we get a higher fence, too? For the residential?
It's a grade differentiation, uh, four feet, and a retaining wall.
Okay.
Still adding a fence as well.
Gets lower, right?
The parking lot is substantially lower.
What it looks like, do you have an aerial of what it looks like now? Yeah.
So, our city foresters indicated that many of the trees are, are ashes and box elders and things that just-
They're, they're not healthy over there, I'm just trying to see how close, you know, I, I guess I, see how close it is to that house.
It's actually a pretty big buffer on the northern edge.
Looks like the garage is right there in the property line, though, is that?
It's like, garage is going away, right?
Well, no, there's one garage here, that's going away, I can't tell with the tree, with this picture.
Yeah, the homeowner has the garage to the south of the property, so inherently it's its own buffer to the living space.
Yes, I know.
In the moment.
Okay.
And entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Valder Person Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second Valder Person Juzwikki, just quickly, under discussion, the architect worked diligently, I think, with his, with his client, to, um, to improve the facade and the exterior of the building, to make it fit in, to make it more usable, um, that's what it started as, on the bottom that you see there, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, potential things, which was overwhelming to the site in any way, shape, or form, um, the current building is flexible enough, um, and fits on the site, and there's sufficient parking, so, the other thing to point out, too, is there's actually kind of a patio area to the east side, along Fifty-first Street, um, which, I think, adds something to the, to the building.
From what I remember hearing, is they were looking for family-friendly, uh, businesses that will coordinate or cooperate with the park.
Yep, so, okay, motion was made, seconded, would you please call?
Alder Person Juzwikki?
Aye.
Alder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Alder Person Castner?
Aye.
Alder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Alder Person Akers?
No.
So, if you do, whoops, it just disappeared, just, there's a twenty-five-foot buffer between the residential property, right, which is pretty significant, and there's a grade differential, and there's a fence, so, okay. So, that passed, going back to item seventeen is to approve an app, approve an application for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six Class B fermented malt beverage and liquor retailer license for the property located at forty-five fifty-five West Forest Home Avenue, I think those folks are here tonight, yep, um, this is the Calibris, um, parcel, um, spent a lot of time at planning on this one, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Saint Valder Juzwikki, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries, item twenty-one is a, let's see, here, item twenty-one is approve a CSM for a proposed lot division at the vacant parcel located at South Ninety-second Street, um, this is consistent with the-
This is what we just rezoned.
This is the stuff that was rezoned earlier in the, right, this is creating a lot.
Motion to approve.
So, I'd entertain a motion to approve, that's CSM?
Motion to approve.
Valder Person Akers, is there-
But you didn't ask for that, I made the motion without you asking.
Sorry, I'm gonna continue to do it anyways, I don't care, is there a second?
Second.
Saint Valder Person Bailey?
We'll get an address.
As soon as the inspector gives us one, there will be an address associated with this property, right?
Building permit would issue an address.
As soon as-
The building inspector-
Chamberlain can assign an address tomorrow, if we would like.
Yeah, just think about it. Okay.
You may have to assign more than one.
One is good, all right, motion was made and seconded, uh, call, could you call?
Alder Person Juzwikki?
Aye.
Alder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Alder Person Castner?
Aye.
Alder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Alder Person Akers?
Aye.
Item twenty-two is decision for the city of Greenfield to enter into an engagement letter for independent legal counsel to represent and serve the Police and Fire Commission, entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Which Valder Person Juzwikki, is there a second?
Second.
Second Valder Person Akers, typically, our city attorney represents the Police and Fire Commission, but is stopped from doing that in this, in this, so, okay, motion was made, seconded, would you please call?
Alder Person Juzwikki?
Aye.
Alder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Alder Person Castner?
Aye.
Alder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Alder Person Akers?
Aye.
Twenty-three is to approve a facility use agreement with the Ridge Committee Church to provide polling, a poll, polling location for wards thirteen through sixteen in the twenty-six and twenty-seven elections, entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Valder Person Castner, is there a second? Second Valder Person Akers, is, what'd you call?
I think they're gonna nail it, too, I think they're gonna do a wonderful job there.
I think they're gonna do a good job, too.
Alder Person Juzwikki?
Aye.
Alder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Alder Person Castner?
Aye.
Alder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Alder Person Akers?
Aye.
Item twenty-four is adopting a resolution to move the polling location for wards thirteen through sixteen from Whittanah High School to the Ridge Committee Church, entertain a motion to, for elections in twenty-six and twenty-seven.
I will make the motion without being entertained.
Valder Person Akers made the motion, is there a second?
I will second.
Second Valder Person Juzwikki, would you please call?
Alder Person Juzwikki?
Aye.
Alder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Alder Person Castner?
Aye.
Alder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Alder Person Akers?
Aye.
I would like to take items twenty-five, six, seven, eight, nine, and thirty together, these are all the other finance committee items, unless somebody wants to take one separately.
Motion to approve those items as presented.
Motion Valder Person Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Saint Valder Person Sarian, would you please call?
Alder Person Juzwikki?
Aye.
Alder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Alder Person Castner?
Aye.
Alder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Alder Person Akers?
Aye.
So, the reason I'm doing that, in the old days, if you remember, we used to, each committee report would have all their items, and then we'd get to that committee report and we could approve all of the items, so I'm trying to go back to that, our software, however, doesn't let us put stuff in there to delineate that, right, I think that was the problem.
And with item twenty-five, we've also gave you the flexibility of installing vending machines at other locations as well.
It should, right, yes, it did, right?
Well, it only says to be held here.
So, just so we're, so with regard to this vending machine contract, you know, just after the fact, and we can revisit it if anyone feels uncomfortable with it, but there may be other locations in the city where a vending machine contract would be a good thing, it doesn't re, so I don't have to come back every time, part of the idea was that the finance committee, that in the event that the turf shelter, or Conkle Park Shelter, or some other city place wanted a vending machine, that I don't have to come back every time, so, part and parcel, this was entered into this contract for City Hall, but in the event that other vending machines were required throughout the city, that I had the authority to enter into them, so long as they were consistent with the terms and conditions of that contract, does that make sense?
And the proceeds is quality of life?
And the proceeds would go to the Quality of Life Fund, so we're not talking about millions of dollars here, but Alder Person Bailey, at the finance committee meeting, thought that, you know, vending machines may not add to the quality of life, so therefore any receipts that are received from them should go towards the quality of life in the city, so.
They have some pretty healthy ones, you never know, you could get-
So, we're trying to get healthier stuff, too, right, carbonated drinks aren't as popular as they once were, although I still like a good Pepsi or Mountain Dew.
Definitely is a good, food tastes better, they say.